Seventeen, I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council. The order, Councilor Donnelly, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Chris Marick?
President.
Councilor Bean. Councilor Bean?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, I'm here. Last time, I want to make sure, you know. Don't cry because you're going to miss me.
Councilor Boishman?
I'm right here.
Councilor Beazall?
President.
Councilor Clark?
Here.
Councilor Deena Tally?
Here.
Councilor Donnelly?
Here.
Councilor Green?
Here.
Councilor Joseph?
President.
Councilor Caddy?
Here.
Councilor Tran calls as he's absent.
All right, so councilors, before we move into a public forum, because we'll be adjourning the meeting after an executive session, I'm going to use this opportunity for several quick announcements. The first, and most importantly, we have five councilors for whom this will be the last meeting for them. Councilors Bean, Beazall, Donnelly, Joseph, and Tran, for whom we received a letter of resignation from earlier this week, as he'll be joining us as our next state senator. But those five individuals represent more than 100 years of elected and appointed service to the city, and that, quite frankly, that experience and that service to the city is staggering. With us this evening, we have State Representative Stephen Hay, and the mayor and I have certificates as well that we'd like to present to this group who are present this evening. So at this time, I think we'd like to give those certificates and do a group photo of those individuals leaving this evening. But I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for the city, the tireless hours and service that you've given to the city. You deserve a round of applause. Those leading councilors who have done the well. I had to find a way to expose you for stressing casually.
We're not moving, you know. We're still around.
Thank God.
Well, I don't know, we brought Nancy Maynard just in case.
I gotta go over there. He's taking a picture.
Look at the camera here.
Thank you, folks.
Hold on. Just kidding, take it back.
Wave or something, will ya?
Thanks, guys.
So councilors, earlier this evening, we received this from Jared Roberts of FATV. This is someone that, for the viewing audience, they don't see much of, but without whom they wouldn't be able to see us on a nightly, and weekly, nightly is far too often, on a weekly basis. And so Jared submitted this letter to us. Dear City Council, I hope the winter season is treating you well. Some of you may know me, Jared, the FATV part-timer that lives in the closet of Memorial Middle School Library. This reputation, this reputation is justified considering they've been covering the City Council Appointments Committee, Finance Committee, and School Committee meetings on and off for the past four and a half years. This makes me incredibly sentimental when I saw that this meeting would be my last. As part of the film and video program at Fitchburg State, I'm going to be an intern next semester at Lincoln Labs in Lexington. While this is a fantastic opportunity, it's a packed schedule, and I must take my leave from working at FATV. I'm in an interesting spot as a member of this community. I've never lived in Fitchburg, but have had one foot in the city since I started seventh grade at what is now Sizer School. Since then, I've worked at FATV, gone to Fitchburg State, and I find myself at numerous events. I may be speaking poetically, but this is a part of me, but there's a part of me that considered Fitchburg my adoptive hometown. Whether I have a reason to or not, I'm writing this to thank you for all of your service to the city of Fitchburg, but also cultivating respect for local government. I started this job as an impressionist youth and leave it only a little wiser, wiser knowing that even with problems we have nowadays and having our voices heard, I know that all good change can only happen from people like you. Thank you so much, and have a great rest of your year, Jared Roberts. And just want to give him a round of applause for all of his work. It was an incredible opportunity for him and his career and his education, going to Lincoln Labs, and I think we owe a great deal to he and FATV for all that they do to make sure. In typical fashion, I don't think there's any way we could urge Jared out of the closet. Jared, thank you.
Photo up.
Photo up.
Oh, photo.
Yes.
Come on, Jared. Go ahead, go ahead. Group, quick, quick, group, let's go, guys, let's go. Don't sit. Stand. Stand, quick photo, photo. Come on. Let's go, guys.
The only thing I don't wear my suit.
Thank you. I didn't expect this. No, we got our right to.
There we go. You're looking great. Smile, folks.
Everybody say FATV.
How about Beazall, can't see you. All right, there we go.
Say Beazall can't see you?
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jared.
I know it.
So I gave you a present?
No problem. Thank you.
Me. My girlfriend. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, are there any announcements from councilors before we jump into the public forum? Council Green?
I would like to discuss this opportunity to thank our City Council Joel Caddy and members of Fitchburg Pride at Pollockham. An amazing community event, Reimagine Main Street. Last Saturday, Saturday before, two Saturdays ago, yeah, was just another great community event, so I hope that we can continue with those. I know it's a huge amount of work, but it was great fun, so I look forward to many more of those events.
We'll now move to the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. I know we have a number of department heads here in the audience who are wishing to speak to the suspension of the rules on several pressing and sensitive finance orders, but before that, I'd like to invite any members of the public if they're looking to speak. Seeing none, I'll invite the first department head for us. Chief Martin, oh, good evening.
Evening, councilors. For the record, Ernie Martin, Chief of Police. I'm here to discuss numbers 30617 and 30717. I would be asking for suspension of the rules. These are two-time sensitive grants that we'd like to get in before the end of this calendar year.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 306 and 30717. I'm going to read these councilors, because this is the first time on the agenda. 30617 ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approve the expenditure of funds for Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department Training Grant in the approximate amount of $26,481.98 for the purpose of said grant, which is to train both fire and police department dispatchers in medical and 911 emergency procedures. And 30717 ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approve the expenditure of funds for Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Highway Safety Division Grant in the approximate amount of $1,635.52 for the purpose of said grant, which is to enhance traffic safety through high-visibility enforcement patrols. I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Curry, good evening.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Councilors, I am speaking on the petition order 308-17. I, too, am respectfully requesting suspension of the rules.
Who suspends the rules on 308-17?
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 30817. Ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approve the expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Highway Safety Division Grant in the approximate amount of $1,635.52 for the purpose of said grant, which is to enhance traffic safety through high-visibility enforcement patrols. I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before you.
Pick a motion to accept 306-17 and 307-17.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 306 and 30717. Speaking to the motion, Council Green.
Yes, Chief, my question on 30617, training dispatchers, is this new and/or updated procedures that they're going to be trained in?
No, it's something we're required to do each year. Civilian police dispatches and emergency medical dispatches from the fire department, they must go through at least 16 hours of continuing education each year, and the funds is $26,000-plus dollars. That goes to train all the dispatchers, backfill with overtime, buy any associated costs with that training. But this is mandatory training that 911 makes our dispatches go through each year in Avery and Bursa City, that amount, so there's no loss to the city.
Okay, and then on, if I may, if on 30717, what exactly is that going to do? Enhance traffic safety, what and where?
This one specifically will be using in the next two weeks. We put out additional patrols leading up to New Year's Eve to detect drunk driving. So on any given night, I may be putting out an additional two, three patrols over the next two to three weeks, leading up into the New Year's.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept 306 and 30717. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Curry, good evening.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Councilors, I am speaking on the petition order 308-17. I, too, am respectfully requesting suspension of the rules.
Who suspends the rules on 308-17?
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 30817. Ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approve the expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant in the approximate amount of $39,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to continue to provide residents with a more robust information about waste disposal and recycling, purchase additional carts for curbside programming, for the curbside program, expand the current program, and reduce, reuse, and recycle in school cafeterias. Motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Do you want it to be adopted? Second.
I have a motion and second for 30817 to be adopted. Speaking to the motion, Council Green.
Yeah, Mr. Curry, can you further expand on the recycling that's happening in school cafeterias? And more specifically, my question is always about the styrofoam trays that are used, and how do we combat recycling when we're continuing to use styrofoam trays?
Good question, Councilor. That is actually being addressed specifically with the school. We do have two schools that are now using the recycling, or, I'm sorry, they're using dishwashing equipment, so they're reusing trays. We are looking to take these funds and previous year funds, combine them, and take a look at whether a purchase of a dishwasher for one or two schools is possible, or that we convert completely, or depending on cost, convert to recyclable trays to reduce the amount of trash that's produced by the trays.
Okay, I would, you know, my urge is always to strongly...
So it's basically a pooling of events for the past three years, you've heard. We're up to about $75,000 now.
Okay, how much does a commercial dishwasher?
Somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000.
Okay, but then the staff to operate it, right?
That has been one of the concerns of the school department, is the additional staff to operate a washing, dishwasher machine, yes.
Okay, thank you, again.
So it's likely the recycling of trays is probably the direction it will take, but...
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Deena Tally.
Mr. Curry, can you explain this again, what this is for, very briefly? I'm sorry.
Sure, annually, we are able to apply to the Department of Environmental Protection for the Sustainable Material Recovery Grants Program. And basically what that is, is you present what, your curbside collection, your drop-off at the landfill, in our case, the landfill, and our disposal program that exists in the city, and you are able to score a certain amount of points for the quality of each program and how many programs you offer. Every year, this program through the state has seemed to gone a little further. Last year, it was $27,000 or $28,000. We do use some of the funds to try to score more points in the program, but some of the programs are quite costly, so it might take a few years to get to those points, to score higher.
Score points?
Every program is, you score points on basically what you collect at the landfill?
Yes.
How many, if you limit trash at curbside, for example, we limit the amount of trash at curbside to a 64-gallon can, that is two, that is two points towards a program. If you offer recycling to a certain amount, you score points for that as well. Very detailed programming, I can...
What do we, I don't want to belabor, but what do we get out of this, if we score a lot of points?
The last several years, I've been funding the recycling calendars, and this, last year, I funded the online calendar in Waste Wizard, which is recollect.
So the points that we collect translate into these dollars?
Correct.
Okay, so this is for stuff we've already accomplished?
Correct.
Okay, so these are carrots from the state?
There is a carrot, you can spend towards scoring more points, yes.
And is this program indefinite?
So far, it has been, for the last three or four years, indefinite.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor. Yeah, I just, I, not against the program, I just, you know, I had a gentleman a couple of days ago ask me why the state spends money on X, Y, and Z, can't spend money on X, Y, and I think of things like this, and I go, you know, it's the state trying to encourage us to do more recycling, we should be doing that on our own. I understand that there's a cost to it, but it's hard to hear grants like these and, you know, hear the state say to us that they don't have money for local aid, but they have money to throw at us carrots because we score points, you know? I just, I know we're taking advantage of the program they offer, this is purely a state criticism about how they seem to never have any money unless it's for things like this, so.
I understand.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adopt 30817. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, councilors.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Jaclyn Poria, Cemetery Superintendent. I'm also asking for permission to act on the orders under the suspension of rules. The two orders are 30917 and 31017.
Pick a motion for suspension of the rules on 309-17 and 310-17.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 309 and 31017. 309 ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approve the expenditure of funds from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Expendable Trust Fund not to exceed the amount of $19,600 for paving of new Section Q and Section O in Forest Hill Cemetery. And 31017 ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approve the expenditure of funds from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Expendable Trust Fund not to exceed the amount of $9,700 for the replacement of fencing at Laurel Hills Cemetery. Speaking to the motion, all those, speaking to the motion, Council Joseph.
What is, why are we required to do this on the suspension of the rules? Is there something that's going to run out?
The financial for the paving, we need to, we need to pay for this.
These are new sections?
For this new section, for this to open, we needed it paved.
No, but it's winter time. Are they going to pave it now, or did they already pave it?
They did, they did pave it.
Oh, so we're paying for something that...
Well, the trustees, on November 30th, they had a meeting, and they approved the spending of the perpetual care interest, and the PJ Albert ran out of time, and they said they could do it this day, so it was done.
Okay.
Council Caddy?
Is the fencing done also?
No.
Council Caddy?
That's my same question.
Okay. I have a...
Would you want it to be adopted?
I have a motion and second for suspension. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Would you want it to be adopted?
What are in opposition?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 309 and 31017. Speaking to the motion, all, speaking to the motion, Council Boishman.
Speaking on the, on the paving, can I ask you one question?
Of course.
Because I didn't hear, you're saying they're going to pave the place now? You want to pave now?
Yes, it was completed before the plant shut down.
It was completed before the plant came out?
Yeah.
It was already paved, is that what you're saying to me?
It's paved at this point.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm on it now, I didn't hear you, sorry about that.
I have, speaking to the motion, Council Deena Tally.
From a procedural standpoint, this is maybe for Mr. Brooks, why do we get these orders after the stuff's already done? I understand there's a timing aspect to this, but if the trustees already voted for the money to be appropriated, is this a formality? I guess what I'm saying is, what do we have to do this for? I mean, it's a procedural question for me, it's like, what if we voted against it? You can't upend the pavement and put the old pavement back, I'm just...
Mr. Brooks, before you respond, if you wouldn't mind, this is our city auditor, Calvin Brooks.
I'm not trying to be, I'm just saying, I understand the timing aspect, but I'd like to see orders come before us, before the work is done, or else we have no choice now but to vote for, and then I ask myself, what's the point of this? You know, if the cemetery board of trustees voted for it, fine, that's their purview, but is this a code thing, or, because if it's a code thing, maybe we shouldn't be voting on these, because clearly it doesn't matter what we have to say, it's already done.
In looking back at what has been done before, I observed that the council has acted to just, if you will, approve the spending of the money from the perpetual care, as they do grants and other things. I've been told that there could be some discussion about whether or not that's required, whether the trustees have the ability to spend without council authorization. But, so, and I don't know what the answer is to that, I was not aware that the paving was done.
Maybe for the new year, I guess, but I just, the money's there, it's for the use of the cemetery, so I'm not, I don't have a problem with that use. I'm just thinking procedurally, why do we even have to, why do we even have to vote on this, unless it's required by the charter or code? I don't know, it's just that the trustees manage the money, you supervise that management of money, if it's there, it's used for the cemetery, everything's great, what do we even need to vote on this for? Because clearly it doesn't matter what we do, the work gets done anyway.
I think caution would have council appropriate funds. I mean, that's a control that I wouldn't want to see you give away.
Well, I'm not suggesting we give it away, but when we're doing work in advance of our authorization, what's the point of our authorization?
To get forgiveness, instead of permission.
Only in the public sector, I'm telling you.
I tend to agree with Council Deena Tally of, you know, you know, I'd rather not approve something than once it's already been done, you know, I would, if we're going to have the responsibility of those funds, fiduciary responsibility, I'd rather approve it before the work is done. This is no criticism, I guess moving forward, I'd like some clarity as to, you know, does it require prior authorization from this body or not? Because if not, then I don't know that we actually need to sign off on an order if they have special authority from either the state or city ordinance to conduct themselves in that way, so...
I don't want to make a mountain out of molehill.
No, no, I guess...
Procedurally, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, unless, I mean, I don't know if the trustees knew they were going to do this months in advance of when the deadline, because I know the plant shuts down. I just would like to think that we knew we were going to pave this stretch before the plant was going to shut down, months in advance, or was this something we had a, the trustees had a...
They had a special meeting to vote on it.
Do you know when that was?
November 30th. This was, this was something that came up with some drainage and water issues and the pitch of the road, and we need to desperately open this section.
I have no problem, I have no problem, just procedurally, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's the cart before the horse, and I would think, because this is, you can't do anything about it, I don't know if there's any controls financially on the city end where we have to contract the company to pave, like, where's the bottom, where's the stopgap to say, listen, we haven't gone through the appropriate channels yet, I know we want to get to the deadline, but you know what, maybe we have to wait till March or April, if that's the, if that's the process, that's all. I, that's it, it's just a bone to pick that, it just doesn't make any sense to me. It completely negates the need for us to even have this before us, if the work can go forward without our approval, because you can't upend the road and put the old pavement back. Thank you.
Council, you done?
Yes, for now.
So, Mr. Auditor, if you could work with the city solicitor at some point, this is certainly not priority number one, but if you could gain some clarity as to what the process should be?
Sure.
I know I'd certainly appreciate it.
I tend to agree with the city solicitor, you know, this is a once, one-time thing, it's not an ongoing problem we're having with department heads. You know, the cemetery department's up against the, up against the winter coming, contractor calls, says, I got to get it paved today, or you can't get it done. They have a special meeting, they approve it, they think it's done, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, I mean, it's not that big of a deal, I don't think. I think, you know, it's a one-time thing, I don't have to make a mountain out of molehill, we're going to have it done anyways, there's money in the budget, move on.
I have a motion and a second...
You know, people tell me, I just agree with the city solicitor, too, so...
I was new with it was going to happen before...
You mean the last time?
Yeah.
A motion and second to adopt 309 and 31017. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
We have three matters, 312, 313, and 314. These matters have already been voted on by the council, they weren't necessarily orders finance, however they appeared on the agenda as such. We don't need suspension of the rules, I'd simply ask for a motion to adopt these tonight.
Motion to adopt 31217, 313, 31417.
I have a motion and second to adopt 312, up to and including 31417. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Ordnance 32117, an ordinance to our parking spaces.
We're still in the public forum.
I apologize, we're still in the public forum. I jumped, I jumped right through, anxious to get to the holidays, I suppose. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public forum at this time? Seeing none, now, if there are no objections, we'll now hear a report from the Appointments Committee, Council Bean.
My last report.
Farewell report, if you will.
Farewell report, and it's a good one, too, by the way. We had a, one, one reappointment before us, Nancy Maynard, for the trustee of public burial grounds, term expires January 1st, 2020, and it passed unanimously by the committee.
Will the Appointments Committee report be accepted and the appointee be confirmed? Second.
Motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, I'd like to recognize Ms. Nancy Maynard, who's here with us this evening, who came for her reappointment, and who has given many years of service to the city, and is looking forward very enthusiastically to continuing that service. Thank you, Nancy. I have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Council Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Will the Committee on Records report be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. We have communications from His Honor, the mayor, we have one letter of appointment from Mr. Brian Bro to the Conservation Commission, and four letters of reappointments, the first for Ms. Mary Rice Hurley to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library, and three letters for the Conservation Commission from Mr. Michael Donnelly, John Kudinen, and Mr. David Strapp.
Will those be referred to the Appointments Committee?
Second.
I have a motion and second that the appointment and reappointment letters be referred to the Appointments Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. We'll now return to the agenda. Finance Committee oral report. Counselor Deena Tally.
Finance met this evening at six o'clock and took up seven orders, and the first, 28917, 290, 291, and 294 pertain to the Fire Department. Three of those four were for capital expenditures for jaws-of-life equipment, repay, I'm sorry, paving and vehicle replacement. And also, 29217 was for the replacement of four detective vehicles and one line vehicle for the police. And 29317 was for general insurance expenses for obtaining services of an independent insurance advisor. And 29517 was acceptance of a grant for the expenditure of funds from the, from the Aeronautics Division Removal Grant for Continued Obstruction Removal on Runway Thirty-two. All orders were adopted unanimously.
Will the Committee's report be accepted?
Second.
A motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
Just a, just a caution, 29517, I know we approved it tonight, because that's the state's portion of the funding for runway approach thirty-two. It's just, to, just be cautious in the future, because I think the airport is required to pay their own bills, and I think that they're overextending themselves. And we continue to accept matching grants, which means that we have to match it. So just to beware, again, I'm not going to be here for the future when all the runway and all that other stuff is done, but I think eventually, the city's going to get into a problem with the amount of money that the airport is going to owe, and we'll be looking at, gee, I guess we can't afford that new City Hall, or we can't afford that new school, or whatever it is, because we've already committed these funds, because the FAA has committed funds to us, and we've already spent the money. So as we continue to approve these matching funds, just remember that the airport is stretching itself.
Counselor Boishman.
Yeah, because I was going to ask, in regards to Counselor Joseph, 29517, I was going to ask if we can pull this one, because I have some questions for Counsel, from Mr. Brooks and Mr. Ellis, the commissioner of the airport, because I don't feel comfortable with this.
I think there's already a motion.
There's already a motion on the floor. Counselor Boishman and Mr. Ellis was with us earlier this evening for questions as well. We can, we can certainly pull it, but I wouldn't be inclined at this time to invite Mr. Ellis to speak to it.
Oh, you want it?
I would not.
Well, then how do I vote on this separately, sir? Because I'm not going to pass it tonight for me, for my vote.
Okay.
That's why we have a vote.
Okay.
Everybody has their own vote.
I understand everybody's got their own vote.
Counselor Deena Tally.
On, on this subject, this isn't the first grant that we've had come before us, and it won't be our last. We've had multiple grants spanning the last several years. I don't recall this level of scrutiny then. Okay? So my point in saying that is, this isn't done in a vacuum, and this has occurred rather frequently. My concern on these matters are, even though they're valid, is once you accept money from these state and federal agencies, I hate to say it to everybody, they own us. Okay? So we've already taken millions from these agencies. And the discussion and the concerns about affordability should have been had at the start of this entire process, before all these votes were already taken. And if there's anybody here that did raise those issues, okay, but clearly, the majority of the council at those times didn't share those concerns, or were not as concerned. So, you know, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place now, because if we don't accept these grants, I fear, you know, it's like the moth, the mob, you know, they're going to come after us, because they've already sunk millions into the facility. We're already knee-deep into this. I don't think there's any way we can get out of it, whether these concerns are valid or not. The discussion should be had at the next budget hearings, when the airport budget is before us. And Mr. Brooks, who became the auditor fairly recently, at least a couple of years ago, maybe a year ago, I'm not, my memory is not very good here, has already communicated to the committee at the prior meeting that he's already heavily involved in this, and he's reviewing it closely, and the necessary steps will be taken for the next budget go-around to ensure that these loans can be paid back. But, you know, we should have stopped this whole thing from starting years ago. We're way into it now. So I don't like it any more than you do, but there's nothing we can do, in my opinion, at this point, short of saying no to the grant, and then see what happens from the state and the feds. Because in my opinion, it's kind of funny, it's our airport, but I don't feel like it is. I feel like the state and the feds own that airport, because of all the money they sunk into it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
I agree with Counselor Deena Tally's point. We, my understanding is, we, we accepted the federal portion of this funding, you know, of this project, you know, for the ninety percent funding of this portion. Massachusetts DOT is contributing five percent, and then we match the five percent. So the proper time for us to say no would have been when we were accepting the ninety percent portion of this grant, not when we're accepting, you know, one of the final five percent. We accepted this project in its entirety, and then we accepted the funding. So either one of those two opportunities would have been the appropriate time. We're now in a situation where, you know, if we don't accept this, who knows? Then the federal government may then come back and say, we're responsible for this sixty-four thousand, in addition to our, our five percent that we're already liable for. So, you know, at this point, we're, we said yes, we applied for these grants, we said yes all along, and now the check's on the desk, we're waiting to cash it. And, and now we're getting cold feet? The, the moment was then, not now. Counselor Joseph.
I guess I'm just giving caution that they're overextending themselves. That's all I'm saying. And if this sixty-four thousand dollars is an amount that's going to overextend the airport, give them a, out of available funds and get the, get it over with. Okay? I mean, you've got money in there, get it over with. Give them one time, do it. But I think that we're, because we keep expecting the airport to pay us back, or be able to pay us back, but yet they're hoping on future revenues. And who knows what the Aeronautics industry is going to be like in five years. Okay? They're saying, oh, we'll build a runway, and they'll come. I mean, you heard it tonight. That's the only way he's figuring on paying for these grants. If it's, if it's a matter of overextending, and we got the money, pay it. If not, just beware that they could be overextending themselves.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Deena Tally.
I just want to make it clear that in the next budgets round, sessions, in my ten years here, unfortunately, the enterprise accounts and the airport, they get, you know, because they're supposedly self-sufficient. All right? So we don't pay enough scrutiny to them. That needs to change this year. And I think Mr. Ellis and Mr. Brooks are getting that message right now. I mean, I'm all set, next budget session, we're having a meeting solely on the airport, because this isn't the first time I've heard about the operations coming in under projections with regards to revenues covering our expenses. We need to pay closer attention to this, and same with the water and wastewater, because I think we get too complacent with the fact that they're self-sustaining agencies, or they're supposed to be self-sustaining agencies, not part of the general fund, so we kind of, you know, move along. You know, no. This, this needs to start having this discussion, particularly tonight, where it was made clear to us that there is concerns about payback. Now it should be front and center on our radar come May and June of this next coming fiscal year. Thank you.
I have a motion and second.
And a motion.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I think it's time for us to tell the big boys with their toys down there to cough up a little bit more money. Simple as that. Then I don't see it helping us in Pittsburgh. So that's how I feel about this whole, this whole game here. So as far as I'm concerned, tell them to start coughing up a little bit more money, because I'm watching this, and next time, I'll come up faster on my request on this airport.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee oral report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition? Motion carries.
Should the 311-17 be referred to Finance Committee?
Second.
All right. Counselor, 31117 will be the last remaining item on the agenda. It will, will come out of executive session to actually act on that matter this evening.
Oh, is that our hope? Okay.
That is correct. Yeah. Ordinance, 32117, an ordinance, two-hour parking spaces shall be installed at the corner from One Lunenberg Street to Twenty-three Lunenberg Street by amending the section 16926 titled-
Be referred to its first reading?
I have a motion and second to send 32117 to its first reading, reference petition 10217. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Speaking on the motion.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Can I only ask this counsel one thing? On these petitions that come before, what is our game plan here? I don't understand the game plan we're having on these parking things. We had Day Street, we used to have meters on Day Street, they moved them across the street. Now we get no more meters, but in the back parking lot, we get meters. Is the goal of the city to eliminate all parking meters? Because I don't understand. I don't understand what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, this here, as Counselor Donnelly and I were talking, if I lived in that apartment house, I'd be downstairs parking in front there. How are you going to know if it's me? And you call the police department, I talked to Ernie about that, he says by the time somebody gets there, I get another two hours. So I could be, I could be parked there four hours. I don't understand it. What are they trying to accomplish?
Counselor Boishman, your question is well warranted, and, and certainly worthy of discussion. However, this petition was passed, this is simply the ordinance and the language that'll go into code, so I don't think this would be the appropriate forum for us to address that question. But certainly, I think as these petitions come before us in the future, that's a worthy discussion that we should be having. As I have a motion and second to send 32117 to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Petitions?
Move 315 through and including 320, be referred to their respective committees?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 315 up to and including 320 to their respective committees. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Will be moved into executive session to the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation between the City of Pittsburgh and MIAA.
MIAA, which is demonstrably likely, an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on litigation or negotiating position of the public body, and so the chair declares the city council will resume an open session after executive session, only for the purpose of acting on Order 311217, and for the purpose of adjournment at this time. I have a motion and, do I have a second?
Second.
To enter into executive session. This will require a roll-call vote. Madam Clerk.
President Kuschemerick?
Yes.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
Counselor Boishman?
Yay.
Counselor Beazall?
Yay.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yay.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Catty?
Yes.
Counselor Tran is absent. Unanimous.
We'll wait for, for those in the audience to exit, and then we'll open an executive session.